Hey Matt.
How you feeling Elizabeth? Good?
Feeling good.
Good, good to hear. How's Josh tonight?
I'm good. How are you Dr. Glosso?
I'm doing great. Any, any live orientations at school coming up or?
For PHS?
No, for Yale.
Yeah, they're going to be doing Orientation Week in person from August 27th, I think.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Good. So hopefully things will be back to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good because I know, I know one of my grandsons now is going to be a junior and he's really had a half semester of college life, you know?
That sucks.
Yeah, right. And you know, he, you know, he says, you know, I was so looking forward to this and it's been a half year of, you know, of college life out of two years. So you're going at a good time, hopefully that it's behind us, you know?
Hopefully, yeah.
So do we have a quorum yet?
Yes.
So maybe you want to get started, Matt? Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the School District operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunity for communication between the Board and the community. So thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 et sequitur, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. Authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the Minister of Clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January 6th, 2021, and distributed also to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noted in the agenda or added by the presenting officer shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this by law. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel, actions referred to high school, central admin, and district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions. I'm going to take a roll call.
Yes, please take a roll. Thank you.
Beth Baron?
Yes, here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Dan Dart?
Here.
Betsy Bagwell?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Present.
Peter Katz?
Here.
Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
Jean Durbin?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of the minutes for the May 4th, 2021 meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Jean, any discussion? If none, would you like to call the roll again, Mr. Bolden?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That brings us to our Student Board Members Report. We have Maya Khan and Yash Roy.
All right. Hello Board Members. There's not much to report. This is actually, I believe, Maya and I's last full board meeting by the next. And for the June board meeting, the new student liaisons will have already been elected. So it'll be kind of a handoff thing for this high school students. And then that over the last month, we had the opportunity to meet with the new high school principal, Mr. Schmeele and Maya and I, as well as the other about 15, 20 students that were there. We're really pleased with what he had to say and we thank you all for your selection of him as the next principal. We're especially hardened with all of the initiatives and ideas that he has for racial equality and justice, especially since in honor of today being the anniversary of George Floyd's death or murder. So we're pretty excited by that. Other than that, high school is slowly, slowly returning back to normal. Most, a lot of students are back in person. I actually switched yesterday to back to cohort D. So overall, student stress and wellbeing is increasing as people are getting back to school and life is getting back to normal as people get vaccinated. So I think that's overall the report that we have. Things are slowly but surely improving.
Maya, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's been such a wonderful experience to have been a Student Board Liaison, especially with Yash. Thank you all so much. I've like learned so much this year and it's really, really like nice and refreshing to see so many familiar faces at school again. Like, yeah, I saw Yash today for the first time and it was really fun to see that. And like a bunch of other students and it was also really nice to hear the future classes of PHS talking to Principal Schmeele on their, our meeting together a few weeks ago. They all have such great ideas and I'm really looking forward to coming back and visiting and seeing all the amazing things that PHS will have in store for the coming years.
Thank you very much. Yash and Maya, I think the Board would like to thank you guys for being part of our, part of our meetings this whole year. It's meant a lot because obviously we've been, we've been through an extraordinary year and to have the two of you with us, present on screen, right here, kind of more intimate with us and kind of reporting to us from time to time how the students are doing. I think meant a lot to us and gave us good data and good information and a connection to the students that we otherwise wouldn't have had. And I want to wish you both, you know, best of luck in your next endeavors. And if any of my Board members would like to say anything as well?
So thank you, Yash and Maya. It's been a pleasure. So will you be joining us? So Beth and I had been discussing this. We realized we totally botched the handoff between your predecessors and your coming on. So we would like, you know, not to do that going forward. So hopefully you can join us at the next meeting as well. And if you could let Mr. Bolden, or if you could let the Board, let us know who your successors will be, that'd be great. And Mr. Bolden can send them invitations as well. So thank you for all your advocacy for your peers and you made a difference. So thank you.
We will be there next, at the next meeting as well. So there'll be the new kids, I believe, and we will also be there. So that will be our true final board meeting.
Okay, good.
And thank you all for the kind words. And yes, we, both of us have also been quite honored to be here as well.
And we really, I really enjoyed this and I think Maya has as well. It's an opportunity to learn more about the Board and just the importance of local government and support.
Great. Debbie?
Yeah, so Yash and Maya, best of luck next year, whatever you do, and congratulations on graduation and everything. And thank you for the information you brought us and for getting more students involved. I feel that was really a big part of what you kind of did this year and I hope, you know, the group next year kind of continues that because you know, we love to hear from students. That is why we're here. So kind of hope that really continues, but really thank you. And yeah, I hope you guys enjoyed it too.
All right. Great. So we'll see you in our next meeting. And that brings us quickly to my present report. And I just want to say, thank you for joining us for this monthly meeting of the Board of Education. As we near the end of what has been a year of constant challenges marked by adaptation, teamwork, and resilience, we look forward to celebrating the accomplishments of students and staff through Moving On ceremonies and graduations, including the PUMS Moving On on June 18th and the Princeton High School Graduation on June 22nd. And those will be in person for our students. Please check out the district calendar and the school websites for more year-end concerts, events, and celebrations. There's all sorts of things going on with our students. And so if you can go to any of the websites, you'll find some really exciting things to watch and be part of. We'll hear tonight from PUMS Principal Jason Burr about recommendations to rename the middle school. The Board plans to vote on a name at our June 15th public meeting. As part of committee reports tonight, the Operations Committee will report briefly on the status of referendum projects with a more detailed public update to come next month, along with a roadmap for next steps on long-term facilities planning. We look forward to an action-packed final month under interim Superintendent Barry Glosso's leadership and to welcoming Dr. Carol Kelly, who will assume the role of permanent superintendent on July 1st. The Board will support Dr. Kelly as she continues with planning for a fall, full reopening of schools in the fall and in setting goals for the 21, 22 school year. At every meeting this school year, we have focused on things for which we are grateful. Tonight, we will use this time to reflect on George Floyd. We will observe a moment of silence to acknowledge the anniversary of George Floyd's murder, an event that caused great pain in our community and around our nation. And we will observe one minute of silence in honor of Mr. Floyd and for all people fighting for social justice in the United States. Thank you. And before we begin our regular business, we'd also like to extend gratitude tonight to those staff and students in the Princeton Public Schools who are working so hard to help the Princeton Schools become more welcoming and a supportive environment for all of our students. You have spoken up, you've asked questions, you've engaged with and taught racial literacy, you've organized rallies, you've signed petitions, and you've launched an educational process to examine how our middle school name reflects our values. We are grateful for your energy, your passion, your hope, and your drive to make a difference. So thank you. Dr. Glosso, over to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Couple of things that I wanted to mention tonight. Board President referenced our work with regard to a full reopening in September. And that is our plan. We have had three teams of people, an elementary, middle, and a high school team working on a reentry plan for full reopening in September. And we're taking all the things that we've learned. We've learned a lot of things from our students. We've had a tremendous input from our parents. We've also had some great suggestions and ideas for implementation from our faculty and staff. So we're taking that one year's experience and putting together plans that we would hope to be able to share with the new superintendent before I leave. But I think it's important that we will have three plans for reopening and also options depending on the governor and depending on things that may occur during the summertime. So our buildings will be ready. Curriculum will be ready. Our reopening plan will be ready. And again, I want to thank all the parents who took the time to thoughtfully email all the students that we've interacted with and all the faculty and staff who've made suggestions. I think, I think in the long run, it's going to make Princeton a better school system. And I think it began in an environment where it was difficult to communicate. But I think all in all, we have now established practice where there's a lot of engagement, both from the community standpoint, from a student standpoint, from a staff standpoint, which I know will be carried out. And it would be so great to do that in an in-person environment rather than a Zoom environment. But I think this year's experience will benefit the Princeton School District for years to come. So saying that, I would just like to segue into Mr. Burr's report tonight. And I would want to just make a few comments. When we began this process and the Board said to me, put together a committee to look at the PUMS renaming. And we put together a community of people, community activists, staff, board members, liaisons. And we, as we discussed how the process would work, we determined that we didn't want anything predetermined. We wanted the process to evolve. And at its core, we wanted the education piece by students, faculty, and staff and community to drive the outcome. And to the credit of our faculty, staff, and students, under the leadership of Jason Burr, I think they, we have achieved what the Board set our task to be. And that is to come up with a, some sort of report that evolved and it evolved from the grassroots. So with that introduction, let me congratulate Principal Burr, all the teachers, all of our students, and ask to Mr. Burr to present a report. So Jason?
Thank you very much, Dr. Glosso. It's truly hard to believe when you stop and you think about it, just how long we've been moving towards this now. And I will try to illuminate that in just a moment. But I've prepared a short presentation this evening to kind of review where we've been and of course, recommendations for next steps. It's a great pleasure to be with everyone as we start heading towards Memorial Day weekend. I'd like to echo some of the comments by Yash and by Maya, how nice it's been to see students back in the building and to feel that sense of normalcy. I was out at our girls' softball game today. I happened to see them turn a one, two, three inning, which was just tremendous and very proud of our kids as always. As you know, I'm very proud to be principal of Princeton Unified Middle School. So just kind of reviewing our timeline. Believe it or not, it was almost 11 months ago now that one of our alumni, Jeffrey Allen, in accordance with some, some of his friends and fellow alumni circulated a letter and a corresponding petition to rename what was then known as John Witherspoon Middle School. A lot of community support around this as well and should acknowledge that, but really want to make sure that I honor the fact that this was a student alumni and student alumni reaching out. And so you see in the next bullet, student alumni reaching out to really caring staff. The connection that some of the alumni had with our high school social studies teacher Katie Denine, and of course, Jen Bijoni, who's the media specialist there, and our own media specialist Carolyn Bailey, helping that group sort of organize their thoughts around renaming, potential ideas, potential names. There was a board discussion last July of Policy 7550, which has to do with the naming of buildings. And all of you are very familiar with that. There was a public meeting of the Policy Committee at eight o'clock on July 23rd morning. And I was amazed for a morning meeting, just how many people came out and showed deep interest in this topic. And you could sort of hear the community support and the alumni support around this idea of the renaming. There was a joint effort Safe Streets Panel on the 29th. There was an Equity Meeting on August 10th of last year and the Board of Ed on August 11 approved a resolution to change the name of the middle school. And at the time, it seemed like there was a lot of time and here we are. I'm reminding everyone tonight that we do have an obligation to rename the middle school by June 30th of this year, not too far away. It was in September that we had a first meeting of the renaming committee and Dr. Glosso divided the responsibilities into an educational plan and a community engagement plan. And he assigned some roles. I want to thank Jen Bijoni for serving with me as the leaders of the educational plan and beginning to pull together some educators to begin engaging the students in the fall of 2020, a PHS. And then later, of course, at Princeton Unified Middle School, which is our, our current name that we are operating under this year. And of course, by on October 12th, the first sort of planned draft was given to that small group on the renaming committee. And it was around that time that I met a very special educator that I want to give a special shout out to this evening by the name of Katie Denine, already mentioned. Katie Denine worked with her US One History students and really delved into this concept of the renaming and the renaming of buildings that we've seen around the country. This is not unique to here. It's been happening all over the country. And Katie galvanized a group of freshmen who were just the previous students who had been promoted from eighth grade. And you could tell right away, and I think Katie would agree, you could tell right away that this was a topic that the kids were very invested in. And all of those projects culminated in a conversation webinar that several people put together, Jen Bijoni and Katie and several others. Key players at the high school, members of clubs. And again, you can still see the presentation on our, it's linked to our website. The students were truly a model for how you can engage in civilized discourse and really have a conversation about a topic. And they were respectful of one another. And it set the table for the middle school projects. I want to thank Mr. McCann and Mrs. McCann and Karen and Calada and members of the Princeton Unified Middle School Teaching Team. There was this idea that our students would create Ken Burns-style documentaries, some of which I have shared in different committees along the way. It was truly a nice way for students to delve into the, the names that were being considered. As you know, the middle school, if you've ever heard me talk up the middle school, you know, I, I like to talk a lot about community period. Middle schools, it's a cornerstone middle school strategy to have an advisory period. And Princeton Unified Middle School is no different. Our community period puts kids in small groups of 12 to 13 students and every staff member in this building has a small community group that they meet with weekly. Our, the rest of our student population had a chance to view those student projects and they voted on potential names for the, for the new, for the new name of the middle school. After that step was taken, there was a community poll that was live from March 5th through April 2nd. So it was up for approximately a month. And we had almost 2,500 polls, votes cast for that polling. Labyrinth Books was an exciting partner. Ms. Von Moltke agreed to put together a book display of all the potential names that were being considered. And she also mentioned this in the advertisement that she puts together. So very proud of that partnership and to know Ms. Von Moltke. And the Princeton Unified Middle School in conjunction with Ms. Shirley Satterfield, Tommy Parker, Dr. Rick Miller, and some alumni of John Witherspoon Middle School got together and they did a conversation with the community and kind of talked a little bit about the history of schools in Princeton and a little bit of that voice that I heard both Dr. Glosso and Ms. Baron mentioned this evening about the way our values have kind of come in a circle and the way our values have evolved over time. Which takes us to the actual poll results. So my students weren't able to watch all of the presentations in one week. They had 10 presentations to see. So we split it up into two weeks. And we had a community-wide poll. We had 673 responses. And if you notice, in the first week, the leading vote getter was for a non-person specific name. The students voted for Princeton Community Middle School as their top choice in that first week in five. Close second, John Lewis. And our eighth graders this year were inspired by learning about Mr. Lewis and his book called March that was co-authored with Andrew Ayden. And Andrew Ayden was actually a guest with us this year. Thank you, Ms. Bailey, for getting that for us. It was a wonderful afternoon, but our students are very inspired by Mr. Lewis. But as you can see, the top, the top polling was to go with a non-person specific name. Funny, in the second week, we actually had a similar result. We had a high number of people in favor for Ms. Michelle Obama. But the leading percentage again was the non-person specific Walnut Lane Middle School. So you had two separate weeks where students voted and the top vote getter was the non-person specific choice. That was also mirrored in the responses that came from the community. You will notice that 28.2% of almost 2,500 community ballots had the non-specific name also as the leading choice. But our very own and well-loved Ms. Shirley Satterfield was the leading person in this case. And special hello to Shirley Satterfield this evening for that. So based upon these polling results, and some members who are, Board members who are members of the renaming committee have already heard me discuss this. In three different polls, two in the middle school and one in the community, the non-person specific choice gained the leading percentage of preference. And so based on these results, I make the following recommendations. I've made these recommendations in writing already and I just want to share them this evening. I think the middle school should be selected from a non-person specific name as a result of those, those three polls and the discourse that we've heard throughout the case of, you know, throughout the course of this entire process. The secondary piece to that is to adopt the previously discussed plan raised by Dr. Joy Barnes Johnson in an early meeting to honor those specific persons who were in consideration for the renaming by honoring them in various locations around the middle school building. There are several ideas for this. You can name hallways. You can name different parts of the building, different outside areas, a garden, various areas. And so I believe that we should try to honor that because there was a significant number of people who had ideas about specific persons who might have been worthy of this honor. One of the things that might go in conjunction with that and an idea that we're kicking around is to plan an exhibit in our Learning Commons that shows the education timeline in Princeton. The history of the segregated schools could possibly honor both Ms. Satterfield and Betsy Stockton, who was in consideration during this time with local photographs. I think that could be a powerful exhibit and a way that we can keep some of this history present. I think that's important. There was an early point made by Ms. Tuck Ponder to create a marker on school grounds highlighting the previous name and the subsequent name change. I think it would be important to make mention that the school was formerly John Witherspoon Middle School. There were several people who were proudly promoted from here, but also to document the name change and the fact that we engaged in this process and felt that it was time for us to evaluate. I am asking that we authorize district funds to apply remediation to that front wall. in, in the, in the main entryway of the outdoor area of the building. Um, and employ some new hardscaping and, and an appropriate display uh, for the new name of the school. Uh, I think one of the things that we talked about is how our values have changed and wanting to welcome all learners. And I think the way we do that visually each day and the way our community members pass by this school should also inspire the same pride. And then finally, I, I'm asking that we update the website to review the steps taken during this process with updated pictures. Uh, and of course, showing the new name of the building in the fall of twenty twenty-one. Names that are under consideration, and uh, I've talked about this in a few places. So I, our students in the community heard about Princeton Community Middle School as a choice. Walnut Lane Middle School is another choice, and there are good reasons for both names. Uh, Princeton Community Middle School is a, the word community, this idea that we have all come together. It's a nice feeling. It has been mentioned to me on occasions that there is such a thing as a community school and that has a specific meaning. And, and if we're not operating under those uh, premise, uh, under that premise, perhaps that's not the fitting name. So it's an evaluation that you would have to make about whether, you know, the feeling of community is what we're invoking here. Walnut Lane Middle School, um, of course, we're, we're on Walnut Lane. We're, we're here right across the street from Princeton High School. Um, it's worth noting that, you know, Littlebrook Elementary School is on Littlebrook Road and Johnson Park is near Johnson Park and Community Park is near Community Park. So there, there's a feeling of the way that the geography kind of uh, says something about the different schools. Other names being considered. Uh, I know there was some early um, aversion to using Princeton Middle School. Maybe that name is still in consideration, maybe Princeton Public Middle School. Uh, we're Princeton Public School District. Um, whether there's a thought around whether you wanted to put some sort of um, uniting word, uh, just like Princeton Community, Princeton Innovation Middle School. Um, there are others um, that have been thrown around in various areas. And of course, there's Princeton Unified Middle School, which we're currently operating under. Uh, one of the things that I ask that you consider is that sometimes that word unified is attributed to some rather large cities in the United States that, you know, talk about the unified school districts, big cities like Los Angeles or Houston uh, have those kinds of, that have that name Houston Unified School District. So again, thinking about is the word important there in the same way as community? I would also make mention that um, some of our students felt strongly that the word Princeton be part of the middle school type that here we are, we're in Princeton. It's a historic community. Our kids are proud to live here and they felt strongly that Princeton should be part of the name. But more than anything, I, I want to end by echoing the fact that, and I think Dr. Glosso said it best, as, as he has said it throughout. This process evolved over these last ten and a half or eleven months. And it began with alumni um, making a really important statement about what they thought and teachers rising to that. Uh, when we think about the way kids feel about school, I mean, think about that. Our kids knew to take this step and they also knew how to get connected with teachers they cared about. How, how did, how do you, how do you possibly say enough about that? Uh, what a tremendous thing. And of course, our Board of Education for the eleven years that I've been here, always responsive. And it's been a pleasure to work with Dr. Glosso this year, and I thank him for uh, letting me be part of this special opportunity. Um, but really, this has been an evolving process that kids began, that kids continued. And I'm simply just taking the information that we've gained, that our kids and our staff members hard work and, and turning it back over to you. Uh, but I'm grateful for every opportunity that I get to know colleagues and work with colleagues. And so I, I thank those colleagues once more and uh, I appreciate everybody listening and their support.
Thank, thank you, Jason. Uh, well done and we appreciate all of your hard work. Uh, and, and also the, the teachers that we've recognized individually and uh, can't the countless students and community members who've weighed in. Uh, so it now is uh, recommended to the Board of Education and I'm sure that they will make the appropriate deliberations and, and come to a, a decision that would honor the work that was done by uh, all of you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Glosso, Jason, Dr. Jason, Jason Burr. It was just a really, really wonderful presentation. And it's been such a pleasure to watch this process evolve. I think all, like you said, all of us kind of didn't know where it would go from the beginning and then to watch month by month, as, as you and your colleagues came up with these amazing ways to involve the students and to to generate community interest and to bring in all these different viewpoints. It's been really a pleasure for me as a board member, and I think my colleagues agree. I know that we're gonna, I guess we can ask some questions tonight. We're going to hear from the public. And then the plan is that we would take a vote on this name at our next meeting. So I guess right now this would be the time for board members, if you have any questions on this presentation. Uh, Betsy?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, Jason, thank you so much for this. It's been wonderful to watch this throughout. It's very inspiring. And I know the students have been engaged, the staff have been engaged. And I also particularly want to say I appreciated the connection between the middle and high school. And I hope it's the first of many partnerships. Um, I think that's really terrific. I know you've partnered with the high school before, but this is probably the first major project, and I think that's really terrific. As you said, they are just separated by Walnut Lane, so they're, they're neighbors. Um, one, so again, thank you so much. One just logistical question. Where does this decision go within the board? Is there, is there a committee within the board who will be then, you know, come considering all of the names that um, Mr. Burr has shared and then bringing one to the full board? Or will, will we discuss all of the options June fifteenth? I'm just curious of where we go from here. Thanks.
Well, my understanding is that we would do this in public uh, as a, as a full board. So I think we'll have these conversations and see where we, where we get to, unless anyone would like us to think of a different process.
No, I think that sounds good. And I have a question. Just, um, so thank you, Jason. That was very good. Uh, we, I asked you this question before in a committee meeting, but I just want to put it out there. Um, so the Princeton Middle School, um, as far as a generic name goes, um, you know, I'll just, that's what I'm leaning towards. And there's been some concern about the initials. Um, and so, and I noticed from some of your suggestions, you're very careful as well, understandably. So while we, and, and then on other, you know, we've gotten some emails that to not name the school, Princeton Middle School, because of the initials would be misogynistic. And of course, we don't want to do that. But we also don't want to cause any uh, additional turmoil for our kids in the middle school. So I guess this is just to put it out there, you know, what are your thoughts? Um, about naming it Princeton Middle School?
You know, it's, it's a very good question. And believe it or not, throughout the process with the various choices, uh, some of our students would go immediately to, okay, what would the initials be there? So that, that actually was a pervading question that happened several times and not just with regard to uh, the thought about Princeton Middle School. I, I guess I would go back to something that I, with the McCanns that I had discussed is this idea that, you know, there were students who felt like they're proud of this community. Um, and so, you know, to have Princeton in the name was important. They weren't necessarily saying it had to be Princeton Middle School. As you said, there's a body of people who said, why not? And, but I, I do think there's going to be people who say, yeah, you know, I, I think you're going to get people on both sides for sure on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Dan?
Um, thank you. You have an excellent presentation. I enjoyed that. And thank you for all your, your hard work and, and the team effort. Um, you mentioned the unified being used in L A and, and um, in Houston in particular, and has a specific meaning there. But it's also a, a, a good word in that we're trying to unify the community, unify the country, unify the world. And uh, and I was wondering if you see any negative connotation to that? And also shortens to, to Pums, which I've sort of become, uh, you know, partial to. And you know, our, all our schools uh, and, you know, use abbreviations, you know, C P and and P H S and so forth. So I wanted to get some additional feeling on, on Pums or the word unified as it relates to a potential name.
Yeah, I, 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 I only suggest that as a means of saying there were, there were people who had also suggested that community was the wrong approach because that's a specific school focus of engaging community extended hours, offering different things. And I simply juxtap, you know, I, I simply put it out there to say, you know, unified has a meaning too in, in certain large school districts. But there's also the word unity and unified, as you, you pointed out. So I, I just put it out there to say that there, there's different, there's different, I guess, issues to kind of work through with whatever name is, is proposed. Um, I think unified is a, is a good goal, as you said.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Uh, just a quick process question. So I know we'll get to hear from the community, um, you know, during this meeting. And then at the next meeting, um, we'll have discussion by the board. And then it's, I'd hope we'd also have a second round where the community could um, you know, share their views before we, we vote, if it's possible to sequence it that way.
Well, I would think uh, it'd be possible to have our discussion at the next meeting and then hear from the community one more time and then vote. Would that make sense? That's how we normally do some of our larger decisions.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
And, and you're suggesting in one meeting then, Beth, is what you're saying?
I think so, yeah. I think we said we were going to decide on the fifteenth. We don't have to. We have the
Okay.
final meeting. We always have one more meeting, but it would be nice for us to and come to a resolution.
And I don't mean to ask a second question if other colleagues have one. My, my logistical question is will board members come sort of with a nomination that evening on the fifteenth? So we'll listen to the community this evening and will then someone put a name in for consideration and another board member may as well. And we discuss among those options. Is that what we're considering?
That's an interesting idea. I think we could do it that way. What do other people think? It may give, may give some structure to our, our process. We can do it as if we were electing someone, right? We can elect a name.
Maybe if we do it randomly by drawing straws. Because I'm, I'm, I'm really excited. Uh, and I, I think it's going to be really difficult to choose. And, and Mr. Burr, I just really want you to tell us what your favorite is, but I'm pretty sure you're not going to do that.
Oh, you're on mute there, Mr. Burr. You probably want to be muted.
Yeah, I, it was, it was great the way that Ms. Durbin said that. I, I really want to hear, but I have a feeling you're not gonna. So I actually was happy to stay muted. Um, yeah, I, you know, I, I think there are several names that are um, worthy. Um, and I'm, I'm still just one person. Um, so you know, there are a lot of people who weighed in on this. And there are a lot of people listening tonight who went to the former John Witherspoon Middle School. And I'm cognizant of that and um, and also people who will be here forty years from now, when maybe I'll still be here. But you know, it's, you know, you never know. But I, you know, I just think there's a lot here to think about and I, I'm, I'm proud of the process. I'm proud of the kids. I'm, I'm proud of the, the staff. Um, I, I go back to, and it wasn't, you know, I go back to that, those first meetings with alumni this summer with possible ideas for a name. And then that list got created with Ms. Deneen in October, and there were several names considered. And but even from the beginning of that November meeting, you had a very strong group of people who were in support of one person. And then you had a very strong group of people who were saying, you know what? Based on what we're seeing around the nation, a non-person specific is, is the choice. And lo and behold, the polls kind of said that. So.
Now we have the second challenge, which is which of the names within that non-person specific name and the variety of those. So would it be possible, because we are a data-driven board and we love data. And this is for our students and our staff and our community. Uh, would it be possible to, to, you know, poll the students and staff at the middle school to say which of these non-specific names do you prefer? And how do you rank them and present that to the board before we make our final decision?
That's a great idea, Dan. I, I would like that as well. I feel uncomfortable having the ten of us. I mean, I know it's our job. It's what we're supposed to do, but we, we really do like to, to have data and to have some basis for what we're, and I think we've been given many, several, several really good choices. So, does that be possible?
We have a suggestion in the chat that said the same thing, Dan.
Good.
Uh, so that, just to be clear, that would be ranked choice voting with um, two, three, four or five names. Um, and then it would come to us with uh, the results. Um, and we'd be able to factor that into our thinking. Am I understanding it correctly?
That is my, that is my request, yes.
As a ranked choice.
And, and, and Jason, one goal throughout all of this is to have this be positive um, and unifying in addition to being um, educational. And um, so one is a, one point you made was the importance some people felt of having the word Princeton in the name. And another note you shared was the, with Walnut Lane, that's similar to the way we've named our elementary schools. Um, wherever we land, um, if you have any thoughts about how to make that um, unifying and how we get everybody to, I feel a bit good about moving forward. I, I, and I think my colleagues would welcome hearing that.
I just, and I'm not sure where we were with the community word because it's true. I, I, we're not a community type school. So I don't want to just say you gotta drop it, but kind of do. Or if we do that, we have to really understand what that means.
So a community school, so we looked at this back in twenty eighteen and really that was one of the goals of the original referendum. Basically, a community school is somewhere um, where you bring some community. So you have um, laundry services, maybe for people uh, for families in need. You have medical care to be um, provided there. You can have night classes there. So it's more, so it would be a building that'd be open, you know, ideally, you know, around the clock like the high school is. So um, it hasn't, in the, I guess the architecture or whatever building, a community school has, you know, a particular name. And you know, that could be something that we want to look at, you know, down the line. And someone just put it right in the chat.
There it is. Thanks, Jess.
An old friend. Thanks, Jess.
Well, I think someone also suggested the idea of teaching the students about ranked choice voting. It's kind of a nice opportunity to talk about.
And, and I wonder too, if we might engage our fifth graders in this voting as well as they'll be part of the first year with the new name. Perhaps it could even be the fifth through eighth graders. I'm just throwing it out there. The students who've engaged in this, um, as well as the, the, the first class of sixth graders to join.
So am I hearing the board correctly that we, we hope that if it's possible, I know Jason, you're, it's the end of the year and you guys are so busy. But is it possible to do a simple poll of the students and the staff at the middle school? And that would be the fifth graders as well? Yeah.
And I don't, I don't see a reason why not.
Would we make, also make one open to the community?
That.
That's harder, right? At this point.
It's a little harder. I would need some time to answer that in the best way as to whether we could get, get that going quickly.
Does the high schoolers be part of it?
Well, can I, so basically I think the fifth grader, it's a good idea to add them. We want to know how the kids feel. Now, this is about, we already went to the community. This is my opinion. We already went to the community. We got some feedback from them. We already asked the kids. We got some feedback from them. Now, right, like Brian said, we don't want to impose our values or our, you know, our concerns on the kids. So I think it'd be great to hear, you know, from the kids as, as to what they feel their school should be named.
Michelle? You're muted.
First of all, no, I'm not muted. I'm trying to pick the right words to say. Um, I, first of all, Mr. Burr and all the folks who work so hard on this, thank you so much. I, I, I do appreciate the effort that went into this. What I will say is we can kick this can down the road forever. And if we are going to continue asking people what their opinion is and students and everyone, we could, we could take it down to third graders. They're coming through the middle school. I mean, at some point, we need to do what we're elected to do, and that's make a decision. Now, if we're going to say, let's do a poll and whatever comes out first, that's what we're going to name it, then I can go along with it. But if we're just going to keep asking and asking. But if we're just going to keep asking and asking and asking, at some point, we have to make a decision. The decision is ours. It's our responsibility. So what I will ask my colleagues is, you know, if we're going to, once again, go out to the public and see if we can get some different suggestions. And when those suggestions come in, the one that gets the most vote, that's what we're going to call it, then okay, I think it's worth the time to do it. If we're not prepared to commit to doing that, we need to make a decision.
Thank you, Michelle. Well.
Well, what, what we don't know is, you know, if we suggested five names that were, you know, voted on a rank basis, right? And clearly one name came out at the top. Then it would certainly make our job easier. And, you know, if four or five names came out, which were basically indifferent from a voting point of view, then, um, then we would, you know, obviously make a decision. But, um, this is not going to delay it long. We could come up with five potential names. Ask the students or the staff or both. And, and, uh, and see what comes up and then have a brief. I think it would make it easier. I think our debate would be shorter if the information comes back. And, uh, and, um, and I think everybody would walk away feeling better about the decision because we are here for the kids. We are here for the staff. We are here for the community. And we got excellent polling results that led us to the point where we have a non-person specific name, but there are many choices within that.
I, I did appreciate in the presentation, it seemed to me that there were two that were, were leading, right? There was the Princeton Community Middle School and the Walnut Lane Middle School. And then there were a couple of other choices. So, I mean, I don't think we have that many to choose from at this point. We just maybe can put, put two or three or so back and see what we get. You could keep this, the current name, or you could say just Princeton Middle School. So you got really four that we've talked about as kind of leaders. That would be simpler and just go to the students and not to the community at this point, because we've come to this point where we could simply make a decision. I think we've got a lot of, a lot of information, but it would be nice to have one last check-in because the four that I just mentioned, I seem, seem to be all kind of neutral and, and kind of similar to each other. Um, I certainly would be happy with any of them. None of them.
I think, I think that's a great idea. And there was a question in the chat about whether or not we should explain some of the issues that might, you know, that were raised about unified or community to the kids, and I think we should. But I think, you know, to Michelle's point, you know, we, we, we said that we were going to have a process. Now we're going back. So we're deviating from that process to go, but that's fine because we want the kids to be comfortable. So, but I think, you know, we said that we have a deadline and, and, you know, we set June 15th as the meeting where this was going to be decided. So I think we should just keep to that. If we, if Mr. Burr can have a, you know, poll done in time.
I do have one suggestion though. We don't like Princeton Middle School because of the letters. I don't know how many of you watch college football, but they always say the Ohio State University. How about the Princeton Middle School? Then it's TPMS.
That's a nice idea, Michelle.
I like that very much.
Like it too.
So do, do we want to do a poll or do we not want to do a poll? If we want to do a poll, then what do we put in the poll?
Well, first, do we want to serve the kids? And if so, what names do we want to provide them?
So do we have a general consensus? We would like to have a poll if, if Mr. Burr thinks it's possible of, of the kids? Fifth through eighth? And the staff?
Well, we do a straw poll on that.
Straw poll on, on doing a
Whether we do a straw poll for the board?
Yeah.
And whether we do a poll for the students on whether a name or?
And are we including the staff? Is that, that?
Yes.
Student and staff. Okay.
Not, not community, just student and staff, right?
But are we just at the middle school or are we also the high school which worked on this and the rising fifth graders?
What, what, Jason, what's possible?
I could see a reason to include our fifth grade for sure. Um, I could also take, taking, uh, Mr. McDonald's point in mind, there were, there were freshmen who brought a lot of work and a lot of thought to it. That I don't know if is as easy to me, but I, I'm sure there's a way to do it. Um, so I'm up for that as well. And, and so that I understand would that poll would limit it to the four choices that were kind of coalescing around? Is, is that, is that the way I would present that poll and?
I think so. I think so. And those four choices are Princeton Community Middle School, Walnut Lane Middle School, the Princeton Middle School?
Let's do Princeton Middle School too.
So five choices.
And I'm sorry, was the fifth choice Princeton Unified or Princeton United?
Right. There was a comment in the chat. That was an interesting comment that said United keeps the P U M S. And I won't say the person who suggested it if they didn't want to be public about it, but, uh, rather than the unified, united would, would keep that acronym as well.
And I think United, from my perspective, works just as well as unified and doesn't have a specific meaning that Jason referred to with Houston and LA and has that positive connotation of unity.
So do I hear that we have five now? PCMS, Walnut Lane, the Princeton Middle School, Princeton Middle School and Princeton United Middle School.
And an opportunity for our students to learn about ranked choice voting. Uh, and make this a, and another engaging process.
And, um, I don't think it was Princeton Middle School. I think it was Princeton Public Middle School.
Well.
Right? PPMS.
I think we're suggesting it. It's a bright suggestion.
Right. Oh, sorry. Okay. I thought we were going back to what, what the list was.
Well, just like we're moving from unified to united. We're putting our adult perspective on it.
So we're not saying Princeton Public Middle School? No.
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 I don't like it. What does everyone else think? No.
Well, collectively, we're Princeton Public Schools.
Right.
I, I think that that's all encompassing.
And then frankly, you're, you're drawing attention to the fact that, you know, we are a public middle school and there are other options that aren't public. So why would, I, I wouldn't want to do that. But again, just me.
I, I agree with that. I, I agree.
So with the choices then, I'm just thinking would be in alphabetical order on a poll and students would be asked, I know we can do that on a Google form to, to, to choose their first, second, third, fourth and fifth choice. Is that correct?
Are we therefore committing to selecting the first choice? Because if you're gonna ask and then you're not gonna listen, why are you asking?
Well, I think we should, I think with ranked choice voting, you assign a point value. And then you see how it all comes in and, and, um, and you, it's, you know, it may not necessarily, you know, a, a school may win that many people ranked second, right? Uh, but it has a few more points in the overall ranking. Do you understand? It doesn't necessarily follow like first, second, third. You rank and then you tally those ranked points, right? So I think that's a really great way to do it, to get consensus.
And we're agreeing then that whatever, whichever name gets the most point or whatever the case may be, that's the one, that's what we're going to name the school?
I, I would say.
Let's do a straw poll on that.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Can I just make up just a point, just to clarify, I, you know, as you guys know, I don't have a vote in this, so I'm, I'll stay silent on the, the subject matter, but just as far as the, the ranked choice voting, the way ranked choice voting typically works in public elections is that if you have multiple choices, let's say in this case, five, you do the first round and whoever finishes last, that gets eliminated. Whoever voted for that one, then you look at those people's second choice and get redistributed amongst the four. And you do that process until there are two left. And then you just see who got the most. Um, and that's what ranked choice voting will do. I don't know if that's what you guys want or not, but that's what ranked choice voting is. You can of course see the raw data for each round as well. That would be a point of, you know, a, a data point to consider as well. But then you have to decide whether or not you're going to follow that or not follow that, or just kind of take it as a consideration.
You're not seeing multiple rounds. They vote once, right?
You vote once. You vote once, but you rank them. So the person, you know, you, you put one, two, three, four, five, and then someone has to tally it all up and figure it out. I, I don't know if, you know, Survey Monkey or other online, uh, systems have.
Complicated process.
Yeah.
Beth, can I, I just want to suggest one thing.
Okay.
Tomorrow's May 26th. Uh, you have a holiday weekend. The board is supposed to deliberate on the 15th. I wouldn't make this too complicated because now we have to, we're, we're, we're going to be discussing this with runoff voting with fifth graders.
No, 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 no.
And, and then, you know, middle school youngsters and then some high school youngsters. And I, I, I'm not sure that we're not providing the enough time for our educators to kind of really make this a, an educational experience. And I'm not so sure the kids are going to really, all the kids are going to really understand it because it's going to be something new, uh, to them. Uh, so I would just suggest that we try to make the process, uh, uh, if you want to engage the kids one more time, I think that's great. But I think we ought to make it a, a process where educators looking at the time constraints, have an opportunity to explain to the youngsters, make it worthwhile and make sure they understand if they're going to participate.
Great. So is there any, do we want to have a, a, how do we want to agree what the ranked choice voting is or what that methodology is? Is that, is that a given? Is that a specific approach?
Yeah, it's usually a runoff kind of, like Peter pretty much explained it, typically the way runoff voting works, but I, I don't think, I don't, that process I think would be too time intensive.
What do I think Peter is talking about? In fact, when you're just tallying, you have one vote, one time, and then you have them ranked. And then that's how you kind of come to the math about who wins, right?
Okay. So you, okay. So you're doing, all right. You don't, you're, you're doing a little different than a runoff, but fine. Yeah.
So.
So do we?
Structure that.
So ba- basically you're doing a matrix. We're going to give them five names and they're going to give, uh, five points to their top choice, four points to their second choice, third, three points to the second, third choice or whatever, down to one point, you're going to then tabulate that and if Pums came, came out with, you know, 900 points and, and that was the, that would be the uh, choice coming to the board from the student engagement process.
Yep.
So it's almost like a matrix voting then.
And we'll make sure they only can vote once, right, Jason? No ballot stuffing. Okay. Um, so is the board comfortable that we, and the question is, are we comfortable with all five choices that we just talked about? And then we will just go with whatever they pick. Is that?
Can you read them one more time, please?
I think it's, um, Princeton Community Middle School, the Walnut Lane Middle School, the PMS or Princeton Middle School and Princeton United Middle School.
So can I?
Sorry.
The community part though, like I'm confused how we're supposed to move forward with that.
Why?
Because of what a community school is and.
I think we asked the, we've asked, um, our attorneys and things. I don't think there's a specific requirement.
Okay. I've never seen anything on that.
So I, I did a little research into this and found, for example, that, um, I think one of the Westminster Plainsboro middle schools were the only middle schools, community, that is community school. Um, I also reached out to our old colleague, Greg Stankowitz, who's a leader in the state and advocating for community schools. And his perspective was that, um, one, it's student initiated and that we should really put some weight on that. And the second is that most members of our community probably think of all of our schools as, um, being of the community. And the third thing he said is hopefully was that it might be aspirational. Um, because he obviously is a big fan of community schools. Um, but I, I, I share the, the, the perspective that it is something. Um, but I could get comfortable with the student initiated name and believe that the vast majority of members in the community would not associate it with the specific entity that a community school is, but I, I, that's just my perspective.
I was going to say, is it?
Go ahead, Daphna.
Go ahead, Jean, please.
Well, thanks. I was just going to say like, um, the Princeton Middle School and forgive me, but because that wasn't originally in part of the voting, um, cohort and it is TPMS, I just don't think that's any better. And I also think putting a the in front of the Princeton Middle School just sounds pretentious. So I, I personally would not be in favor of including that in our mix because we generated it here and, um, it didn't come from the, from the students for the, for the poll.
But it is ultimately our decision.
Yes, I understand. I think.
And, and that, and we would legally allow to do that. I'm, I'm.
Now you have six choices.
It is, we, we've got really big fish to fry, guys. And, and, and we've got a lot to do to get the kids back in the school building in September. And, and just to finish out this year, and I just want to make sure that we are using. And again, I'm not suggesting that this is not an important decision. It is, but we prevailed upon our kids. We have prevailed upon our community. We've asked them for their opinion. They've given it to us. We need to make a decision.
And just to clarify, Jason, that Princeton Community Middle School and Walnut Lane were the only two that came from kids, right? And then the others, the others have been sort of, um, brought up, I think, by other people throughout the process. So I just want to.
So Jason, was Princeton Middle School ever an option for the kids?
It, it wasn't one of the non-person specific names that was considered throughout.
But but as I understand that the kids, um, these names were selected and then they did their projects on it. So the names were selected by who? Was it the kids in the class or? Like, how did that all start?
Yeah. So I mean, we began with a list of around 18 individuals that also included some of these non-person specific choices. And then that started to get whittled down just through the discourse of, you know, the process of the renaming committee and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable throwing Walnut Lane or Princeton Community out because those names have been in consideration all along.
Right. But, but I guess my question is, are we really going to name, let's say the kids come back and they want to name it the Walnut Street Middle School. Do we, is that what we want to name the school?
I'm okay with that.
Well, I think if it was, you, you know, it depends. You have to see the results. If it comes back 99% for the Walnut Street, Walnut Lane Middle School, it would influence our thinking. If it comes out, you know, virtually tied, then we would make a decision based on that.
Okay. So to Michelle, I'm sorry. So to Michelle's point, we're not going to do, we're not committing to, to, um, whatever they, the students decide. This is going to influence our final decision. Is, is that what we're saying?
It's always our decision. I think what Dan was saying, we'd like some data and I, I agree with them.
So can I just make a suggestion that, um, before we finalize this, we hear from the, the members of the public, many of them, I, I are very smart and thoughtful about these things. And, um, I, I think if we listen to them um, and then return to this and then try to be quick, because as Michelle notes, we've got
Got a lot to do.
Important stuff to do, but I'd like to hear from the community before we finalize this. Great.
Okay. Let's do that. Dr. Galasso, are you raising your hand?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I, uh, I was holding my head. Sorry.
Looked very much like a hand. All right. Um, I think we're going to go to public comments. Uh, on agenda and non-agenda items and Matt, um, so we asked that the, you, you state your name and your address and you keep your comments to three minutes, please. And if someone has already said what you want to say, if you would kindly not repeat, uh, and just, you know, not, not bringing, bring up only new things, that would be helpful. And, um, this is not a Q and A to the board. Um, we are listening. This is a business meeting. We're here to do the business, but we want to hear from you. So, um, Mr. Bolden, would you please call on people?
Jennifer Cohen.
Hi, Jennifer Cohen, Henry Avenue. On May 11th, I emailed Jason Burr, the board and Dr. Galasso about the origin story behind the movement to rename the middle school. On May 11th, I emailed Jason Burr, the board and Dr. Galasso about the origin story behind the movement to rename the middle school. I respectfully requested that the origin story, which will go, which I will go into, be included in all PPS communications and curriculum. I even drafted an example. I did not receive a reply until yesterday. A canned response from the communications person. Tonight, I was dismayed to see Jason Burr, who is the principal of the school my son attends and where my daughter will be going in the fall, make his presentation omitting the origin story and doubling down that the movement was sparked by students. It was absolutely led by those students, but what was talked about tonight was not the truth. Here's the story, which has been sent to local press outlets, many, many PPS staffers and other community stakeholders. The movement to rename the middle school began June 21st in a private Facebook group for black families. A white mother posted about Woodrow Wilson's name being removed and asked if anyone was interested in working on it. A black mother said, yes, she was interested. The two later discussed racism in the schools and agreed to collaborate on renaming the school. She took it to her son, who became the face of this movement and led it with his multiracial coalition of friends. Why is this important? Because it's really important that a white person realized that something needed to be changed. But they should not be the center of that, that it should have been led by black people because it affected them directly. That school had the name of an anti-abolitionist and slaveholder. I'm that mother. I would like to know why all of you are sitting there talking about this and acting like you don't know what's going on. And it is so disingenuous and so harmful because literally half the district knows this origin story. So I just, I'm so mortified by all of you. And I don't understand how you can expect people to trust you when you would sit there and do this and omit this. Is it so threatening that a white mother partnered with a black mother to get this name removed from the school? Why on earth would you do this? It completely undermines this process. And the fact that black people were not centered and elevated and the ones leading this all along. Why I'm hearing white staffers' names being name checked and why Jason is leading this is part of the problem. I really don't have anything else to add, but just know that this is very much known. And I really hope you do some soul searching. Thank you.
Ashante? Ashante Thompson.
Ashante Thompson, 227 John Street. And I am coming to you as a parent and also a staff member of PUMS. And I want to applaud my principal for all the hard work that he has done on this project. It has been a collaborative effort with black, white, blue, green community members. And I just want to say wholeheartedly, I think the black voices were heard, have been heard, have been respected through this process. And I will just leave it at that. And I think the board, for your hard work and understanding that this name needed to be changed, and given the voice where the voices need to be heard, which are the students who played a major role in this. And if you were there to witness our eighth grade projects, they were amazing, engaging. And the students felt very much a part of it. And the fact that you're giving them the last opportunity to speak and vote on it brings me joy. So thank you.
Thank you, Ashanta. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. Just back to our discussion. Would we like to still just go ahead with a poll? Sorry, of the five names. So again, we're going to ask Mr. Burr to somehow get us some data on student input and staff at the middle school, fifth grade through eighth and perhaps ninth. And we're going to give five names. Right? And PCMS, Walnut Lane, the Princeton Middle School, Princeton Middle School and Princeton United Middle School. And we'll see what we get back. It's our decision, but we'll have some data and it will inform how we make a decision on the 15th. Is that?
And when are we going to ask that data back?
Why not give, I mean, it won't, it won't be that hard to decipher the data. So why not give the principal and the staff at least the 12th of June, and then he'll present it to me and I'll disseminate it to you all.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Burr. We really appreciate your time and effort to this really important and educational and significant effort.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It was nice to be with you all. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night. All right. I'm going to, so next item is item I, one harassment and bullying. It's a part of our consent agenda, which we will then vote on at the end. Then we're on our board committee reports. J1 Equity, I believe Debbie, you're going to give that report tonight.
Yes, yes, thank you. So this is from Betsy and I. The Equity Committee met in a public meeting on Monday, May 10th at 7:00 PM. Dr. Galasso updated the board on discussions he is having with the middle and high school principals about how to support all of our students during tragic and challenging times by providing opportunities and space for them to talk openly about current events. These structures will be put in place for the next school year. The committee and members of the public had a great discussion about a suggestion made by a member of the community to think about renaming the Equity Committee to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. The committee will be deciding whether to make this recommendation to the full board. Themes from our March Equity Committee meeting related to the culture components of equity in the Princeton Public Schools were shared. Following that discussion, we met in breakout rooms for small group conversation to discuss what tangible actions are required to shift the culture of Princeton Public Schools. We shared these suggestions with the full, full group prior to time for public comment. Our next public meeting is on June 14th at 7:00 PM. The agenda will be posted on the website calendar prior to the meeting and public is invited and encouraged to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Any questions? Then we go to Operations Committee. That would be Susan and Brian.
Hi, we met on May 19th at 8:00 AM. First, we received an update on the referendum projects. And as you noted, Beth, we'll get a more complete update at one of our next upcoming meetings from the administration. But in terms of Pums, there was a last issue in terms of moving a fence. We were told that within a couple of weeks, that last issue should be taken care of. PHS, we got an update that the restroom building and guidance are all expected to meet a mid-August completion date. But we will continue to get updates on the new addition and the gym renovations, which as of now are not scheduled to be completed by the beginning of school next fall. In terms of sustainability, we heard an update that the LED lighting that will be updated in the elementary schools is moving forward. And that a final decision will be made on which lights to be used, as well as green cleaning products that are continued to be discussed for the summers, cleaning by the custodial staff. We approved a PHS pit, new pit cover for the orchestra area at PHS. And that continues the district's efforts to keep our schools maintained properly. And finally, we approved Nutriserve contract or recommended tonight for board approval, a renewal agreement with Nutriserve. And one last item in terms of parking, the administration and the board continues communicating with the town staff and council members to ensure the district's needs are being well understood as they consider changes to the PHS area and parking rules going forward. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 23rd at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I just, can I just add that when Susan says we approved, I know she means we, we are recommending.
Recommended.
To the, to the full board for approval. There are also some change orders that the committee recommended. But Susan did a great, great summary.
Thank you both. That takes us to personnel. Michelle?
Personnel met on April 29th, May 6th and May 20th. We've been very, this is our busy time of year. And so we met and discussed a wide variety of personnel issues, most of which I'm not at liberty to discuss. I will say though, that we discussed the coordinator of school security position that's on the agenda this evening. We talked about our sick leave bank and how that process ought to be managed. And another wide, a wide variety of topics around specific personnel issues. So I think that's probably the most appropriate report I can give at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Then there's policy. Jean?
Thanks, Beth. The Policy Committee met on May 21st. We discussed a number of policies for first and second read that will be pushed until the June meeting in light of scheduling issues and the bandwidth of staff. We're working on a recommendation to the full board on how to correct the public record during and after public meetings. We continue to work on good governance practices and advocacy opportunities in order to facilitate a smooth and normal opening in September, as well as state and local advocacy issues. And we next meet on June 25th. This has been changed from June 18th at 7:30 in the morning. Thanks.
Then we have student achievement. Daphna?
So we skipped over negotiations. I think it might not.
Comes at the end.
Oh, it does. And after S, got it. Okay. So Student Achievement Committee met on Friday, May 21st. We welcomed students from the high school who discussed their science research projects. We then discussed two items that are on the agenda for board approval tonight. One is Latik Professional Development, which means, oh, I just had it, learning. Let me go back there. Hold on. Sorry. What happened? It is learner-acted, technology-infused classroom. And 12 of the 14 teachers at the high school, it's a three-year program, 12 of the 14 science teachers at the high school will be participating, as will four special education teachers. And so we look forward to seeing how they can share that with their colleagues in the district. Also on the agenda for board approval tonight is because of the success of the science research program, we are increasing lab tech from point five to point one. That's on the agenda for tonight. We then discussed framework for curricular review. Dr. Ginsberg provided a very methodical plan for review. Upcoming reviews planned for the next school year are mathematics and our DLI program. We received information only items on our summer program enrollment, which is robust, and also on kindergarten, kindergarten registration. Our next student achievement meeting is on June 4th. It will be a closed session to discuss the special education report, which the board just received. And that report will be presented publicly on June 15th.
Thank you, Daphna. And last but not least, would you like to tell us about negotiations?
Yes. And so I'm very pleased to report for Michelle and I that we have reached an agreement with our PAA Union, which is our administrators' union, the principals and the supervisors. And so we're very pleased to announce that we've reached a three-year agreement. And that contract will be on the agenda for board approval on June 15th. So we'll look forward to sharing more details at that time. And we'll welcome Mr. Louis Ramirez, who's president of the union, who shepherded a great negotiations process to join us at that time. Michelle, did you want to add anything?
I think, no.
I think you did a great job.
Okay. So it was a great process. So thank you, everyone.
And thanks to you and Michelle for leading that process on behalf of the board and to our administrators who were on the team with you because we're really pleased that that's moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Great, great amount of work for us. Okay. So after committee reports, now it's going to go quickly and I'm going to give the items that are consent items. And if anyone has a comment or question, please stop me. Okay. So K1 Appointments. K2 Resignations. K3 Personnel Items. K4 Transfer Reassignments. K5 Leaves of Absence. K6 Curriculum and Instruction. K7 Student Services. K8 Athletics. K9 Substitute Teachers and Student Replacements. K10 Resolution to Create Unbudgeted Position. K11 Increment Withholdings. K12 21, 22 Unaffiliated Reappointments. K13 20, 21, 22 Presser Reappointments. K14 Priya Reappointments. K15 Transportation Reappointments. K16 Sixth Period Comp. K17 Job Description Update from Science Laboratory Tech. That takes us to L, L1 Educational Consultant Services IDE. L2 Grant Application Acceptance. L3 Grant Application Acceptance ESEA. M1 Wilson Reading Language Services. N1 Financial Reports. And two Change Orders. And three, Rejection of Bid HVAC Upgrades. And four, Send/Receive Annual Tuition Agreement. And five, Amendment of Grant Application for the Security Grant. And six, Joint Transportation Agreement with Lawrence. And seven, ESY Joint Transportation Agreement with Lawrence. And eight, Food Service Management Contract.
I have a comment.
Yep.
So I just wanted to say, Matt, thank you for verifying, but the federal government through some of the COVID relief, it will be providing a lunch to every student in the district, and this is across the country. But so what is typically only for free, kids participating in the free and reduced lunch program will now be available for every student. And so in the past, we've had sometimes not full participation from kids in the free and reduced lunch program, possibly because of some of the stigma that's associated. And so I hope for the 21, 22 school year, we can really encourage all families to have their kids participate in having lunch in school. The food has gotten much better. So, you know, I hope that's something that we can continue to stress to, you know, make, you know, lunch at school a reality for all, all kids. So.
Thank you, Daphna. Then we're on number nine, Spring 2021 Bus Safety Drills and the Fire Evacuation Drills. Travel Registration. And then we are to our consent vote. And could I have a motion, please? Daphna, second. Jean, any discussion? If not, could we call a roll for the consent, please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Will be Bronfield?
Yes.
And Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Ryan McDonald?
Yes.
Phil Talk Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Dean Durbin?
Yes.
Sent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then we do have closing comments, but we have public comment after that. Maybe we want to have our last public comment first. If that's okay with everyone.
Politely saying that that's in the wrong spot.
You just move it every time and make it a little bit more interesting.
I do that, I swear.
Always testing me.
It's called gremlins.
So we are now our second public comment period, same, same rules. We would hope that everyone says name and address, three minutes, please don't repeat, not a Q and A. We're happy to hear what you have to say. Please raise your hand if you have anything to say.
There are no comments.
If not.
There was one person. Andy, hello, Ann.
Hi, I'm the parent of a senior in PHS and a child in the middle school. I am curious with regard to the personnel agenda tonight, why? It's, I, I know it's sort of a question you don't have to answer. I just want to put out there that I am curious why our recently appointed assistant vice president, assistant vice principal is on leave from May 11th through June 30th. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we cannot comment on personnel items. Are there any other comments?
I think I'm unmuted. Thanks.
I think I'm unmuted. Thanks, Matt. I'm Keisha Smith Carrington, supervisor of humanities, grades P through six in the district. And I apologize, I was late to the meeting, so it could have been announced at the start. But I do want to remind any parent who's listening that tomorrow night, we will be having Dr. Sonia Cherry-Paul, who will be presenting for parents on the topic of racial literacy. And she is also the author of the current number one bestselling children's book for children, which is stamped for kids. So if you are interested in attending, please go to the district's website, either the calendar or right alongside the bottom of the front page. Thank you very much, Dr. Galasso and Elizabeth Collier for that. You will be able to see the link to register for that event. And I would really like to publicly thank the JPPTO for all of their efforts in this project that has been spearheaded by them in their building for grades two through five. Thank you.
Thank you. What time, what time is that tomorrow? That's Wednesday night?
Yes, seven to nine o'clock.
Seven to nine, and it's going to be a webcast?
Yes.
Great.
That's it.